So I'm calling this meeting to order, special town council meeting, town of Fairfax, Wednesday, September 13th, 2023, at 5:00 PM in the Fairfax Women's Club and on Zoom. I'm going to do a quick pledge of allegiance. If you can all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And can we do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Present.
Councilmember Hellman.
Here.
Councilmember Blash.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kohler.
Here.
Mayor Cutrone.
Present.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll move that. Second.
Okay, motion Kohler, second Blash. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Christine?
Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Blash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kohler.
Yes.
Mayor Cutrone.
Yes, all ayes. Motion passed, 5-0. Okay, I'll read the land acknowledgement. The Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Mewok people of present-day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and emerging. We will now move on to the regular agenda for this special meeting. We have one item on the agenda this evening, which is the appeal of suspension of a building permit at 79 Wood Lane from the appellant, Kobe Friedman. And I believe we have a staff report from our building inspector, building official, Mark Lockaby, who you are here. Thank you for being here, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a staff report here, but I've kind of parsed it down a little bit to just kind of mention the key points. If you want to go back and look at the staff report, we can do that if there's items on that that I don't cover. On January 20th, 2022, the Planning Commission approved application 2117 for a new residence garage and ADU at 79 Wood Lane. To allow for the construction of the Prose project, the Commission made the appropriate findings and approved the project. On August 4th, 2022, a building permit was issued to Kobe Friedman to construct a single-family dwelling and a detached garage with an accessory dwelling unit attached to the garage, under the assumption that the site would be built as approved by the Commission. Shortly after the permit was issued, a stop-work order was posted due to the building footprint for the house being overexcavated beyond what was approved by the Planning Commission. Kobe Friedman's attorney filed a writ to have the stop-work order removed. After the court hearing and discussions, Mr. Friedman agreed to construct the underfloor area with a stepped-up foundation system. The foundation was installed, and then the project went dormant through most of the winter. Construction resumed in the spring. On June 5th, 2023, I went to do a framing inspection. During the inspection, I noticed that there were numerous changes to the plans without the required approvals. A stop-work notice was posted. Discussions ensued between Mr. Friedman, his attorney, the Fairfax Town Attorney, and staff. We came up with an agreement that would allow him to continue with some portions of the construction while seeking approval for the unpermitted items. Construction and inspections continued as agreed for two months. And on 8/10/2023, I went to 79 Wood Lane due to concerns by the adjacent neighbor regarding excavations at the site. While there, I noticed the construction had commenced again, inconsistent with Planning Commission approvals. After I had discussions with Mr. Friedman and his attorney had discussions with the town attorney, I provided a letter of suspension of the building permit to Mr. Friedman and posted at the construction address along with a stop-work order. Some discussions were started between Mr. Friedman's attorney and the town attorney. And on 8/23/2023, Mr. Friedman's attorney sent an email that they would not be complying with the orders and would continue construction. Construction resumed without town approval. On 8/25/2023, I went to 79 Wood Lane with an officer from the Fairfax Police Department and informed the work crew that if they continued construction, they would be individually cited for ignoring the posted stop-work order. On 8/29/2023, Mr. Friedman's attorney filed a writ to have the permit suspension and stop-work order lifted. On 9/5/2023, the judge set a future court date and directed parties to meet and confer regarding the issues. On 9/6/2023, Mr. Friedman filed an appeal to have the town council lift the suspension and stop-work order. At present, excavation of the garage is in a hazardous state as appropriate support has not been provided. There is a potential for collapse on the sides of the excavation, causing damage to the adjacent property. Mr. Friedman has declined the town's request to stabilize this excavation pending the resolution of the building permit suspension. Mr. Friedman has continued work that is inconsistent with the approval of the Planning Commission and has repeatedly violated stop-work orders. At this time, town staff cannot approve Mr. Friedman's building plans without approval of the appropriate planning entitlements by the Town of Fairfax Planning Commission. Due to the fact that the applicant has so far built a project that is inconsistent with the approved plans, staff recommends that the appeal be denied and the suspension be upheld pending review and action by the Planning Commission.
Thank you very much. I guess we, at this time, we don't have to do any... Okay, yeah. So do any of my colleagues have questions? Yep, Vice Mayor Kohler.
Yeah, I just want to go back to the... Just a question on the excavation of the garage and the fact that it's in a hazardous condition and that Mr. Friedman has denied our request to stabilize that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And so that hasn't changed?
That has not changed.
And so depending on what happens tonight, we don't know, but potentially... Maybe I would ask our attorney, Kylie Otto, do we have a date for the hearing? Should it go that far?
I am not aware of the date. Perhaps the appellant can tell us the date unless staff happens to know it. I'm not aware of when the court set the next hearing date.
Okay, well, thank you. That's all my questions.
Any other questions?
I guess that would be kind of similar to my question, which would be if the stop-work order within the suspension of the permit, which is currently in effect, if that were upheld tonight, then what would the... What could happen as far as stabilizing the walls of the excavation?
Well, we felt that we could allow him to do that because of the nature of the condition. But that would be something that Kylie or Janet would have to address further. But we have, during the suspension and stop-work order, I had personally told Mr. Friedman to please continue on that work. And I also told him that he could move the drywall that was outside in the front inside the house and some other tidy-up items, and any safety issues could be taken care of. And I told his workers that they could remove all of their equipment and tools, which they were concerned about.
Thank you.
And this is Kylie. If the suspension was Council's pleasure tonight to uphold the suspension, I agree that the city could allow him to secure the site, especially with the hazardous condition, the grading. They could give him a limited, "Here's what you can do", just to make it safe and secure for the site.
Great, thank you. That's very helpful guidance. Any other questions from council members? Okay, do we have the appellant, Mr. Friedman, or his designee here on Zoom?
Hello, Mr. Mayor. This is Richard Harris on behalf of Kobe Friedman. Good evening.
Good evening. Feel free to take it away.
Okay, as a first matter, I raised this with Ms. Coulson, and she suggested that I raise it with you. Mr. Friedman is requesting a delay on this hearing. In the papers that the city or that the town submitted to the court, the town suggested that this appeal is governed by Town Code Section 17.024.060, which is a section related to suspension of permits by the Planning Commission. On that representation, Mr. Friedman did agree to submit an appeal, though it does appear that the Town Code doesn't have an appeal process for actions by the... under the building code. If the appeal is under 17.024.060, then the appeal has to be noticed in the same under section 17.024.110. It has to be set for hearing in substantially the same manner as provided in section 17.032 of this title. And that requires notice in the same manner as 17.004.070, which would require 10 days' notice. Ultimately, we received two days' notice, which has affected both my ability to provide documents to you and also is affecting my ability to provide a fulsome argument to you of all of the various reasons why I believe that the permit suspension should not be upheld. And so I had asked the council to rule on that on this time. And then I can, depending, I can then give my response, as it is right now.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add to that.
Please, Ms. Coulson.
So it is our opinion that the appeal is governed by Chapter 17, but the section that we are citing to says that it's noticed in the same manner as the lower body. And there is no required hearing for a building official suspending a permit. And so we are running off of the 24-hour notice for a special meeting of the town council. I will point out also that Mr. Friedman rushed in and filed an appeal prior to completion of discussions amongst the attorneys about how we were going to handle an appeal. And so we assumed that he's anxious to have it heard as quickly as possible. We're trying to accommodate that. And so, as you know, it's difficult to get the council all together with your very busy schedules. And so we tried several different days, and this is the one that seemed to work for everyone. There are no new issues here. They've all been fully briefed as far as the court documents that we received state. And I do not believe that the council is required to give a 10-day notice on this appeal hearing. And so I would recommend that you continue on with the appeal hearing. Perhaps Kylie Otto has any further information to provide to you, but that is the position of the building official.
From the position of, as your city attorney, acting city attorney, I don't disagree with anything Janet said. The appeal, there was no additional requirement for the building official to hold a hearing, so there's no notice requirement for that. So then you have to default to the Brown Act, which is 24 hours for a special meeting. And as provided today, the court documents were provided. No additional information was prepared. So it would be at the council's discretion whether they would like to grant the continuance or not. But as far as, from a legal perspective, we don't believe that the code provides any hurdle to prohibit you from acting tonight.
So do you need a motion to agree to continue with the hearing tonight?
The app... asked for that. It's obviously at the discretion of the commission or the council. If the council is inclined to continue the matter and stop this discussion, of course, you could do so. If you do nothing, it continues on at this point in time.
Thank you.
I think I'm of the opinion that we continue moving forward.
Agree.
I agree. Continue as in tonight.
Correct. Move forward, and we'll allow Mr. Harris to proceed. So, yeah, thank you.
I understand that the council's not going to make a motion to continue. And I should lodge my objection that I believe that if the... If the appeal is not occurring under, as the town represented to the court, under 17.024.060, then I do not know what Town Code section we are proceeding under. I don't know what the procedures are that we are using or the validity of the... of the planning code applying to Mr. Lockaby's summary decision to suspend the permit. So I continue to object, and I believe it will prejudice Mr. Friedman. Let me just start here. I know that I gave you many documents, the documents that I was able to prepare on the short notice. One thing that I think is imperative to point out is that the citizens of Fairfax have a constitutional right to a hearing, a noticed hearing, and substantial evidence prior to a permit being suspended or revoked. I'll just... I've cited the cases in my brief, but it's the appellate court has stated that in revoking a permit lawfully granted, due process requires that it act only upon notice to the perma-ee upon a hearing and upon evidence substantially supporting a finding of revocation. That's Transatlantic Oil Corp. And then another case, as in the transoceanic case, it is conceded, in this case, that the rectory permit was revoked without prior notice and without a hearing. Therefore, since the permit was validly issued, the attempted revocation was a violation of due process and was inoperative and of no legal force. That's City of San Marino. What the cases state is that if there is a permit that was lawfully issued and it is suspended or revoked without a hearing, then it is that action being taken is inoperative and of no legal force. On that basis, there was no hearing by Mr. Lockaby prior to suspending the permit. I'm also... The reasons that Mr. Lockaby stated that he suspended the permit are that the permit was issued due to incorrect or incorrect information. There's a section in the building code that would allow him to suspend the building permit should the building, if the building permit was issued based on incorrect information. But I don't believe that that is a correct reading of that the fact that there are changes to plans are, is a good reason to suspend a permit due to incorrect information provided when the permit was provided. The permit was... The fact that changes will be made to construction is contemplated in the building code. It's even clear in this case, after Mr. Friedman started work, Mr. Lockaby agreed to step foundation. Whatever the dispute was previous to that, the fact that Mr. Lockaby has the authority to accept changes on the ground, these changes are similar. Under the building code and under SB 9, Mr. Friedman is entitled to ministerial review of these kinds of changes. It is... It is required that his, whatever changes he makes, are consistent with the building code and with the planning code, and his changes are consistent with the building code and the planning code. And so they should be approved. I should also point out there are some inconsistencies in Mr. Lockaby's or some incorrect statements in Mr. Lockaby's statement that I do want to correct for you. He states that there was an agreement that all of the parties agreed to, and then he cites some italicized language. Prior to this email, Mr. Friedman and Mr. Lockaby had discussed the changes on the property. And Mr. Friedman submitted to Mr. Lockaby plans which showed those changes. And it was on the basis of those plans. Those plans are also included in the verified petition, which I provided for you this afternoon. Those are the plans that Mr. Lockaby could have formed a ministerial review on, thereby resolving many of these issues. Regardless, Mr. Friedman did not agree to this. This is a frame from an email. He did not agree to this email. He responded with various other requirements and clarifications. Mr. Lockaby did not agree with those requirements and clarifications. Ultimately, and this is described also in the verified petition, it's in paragraph 21. "I wrote to Ms. Coulson requesting a final attempt at a solution." Mr. Friedman would submit plans for some of the changes. Other changes would receive ministerial review, and he would submit those plans within 60 days. That was sent on June 23rd, and unfortunately, that was the end of the negotiations. And we were unable to come to any agreement. So it's not true that Mr. Friedman agreed to this particular description of resolution. I also want to point out that the city is required to have the... Through the various negotiations or discussions with your town attorney, it is even now not clear to me if there is an appellate process for decisions by the building inspector, whether or not that's included in the Fairfax Town Code. As I read the Town Code, that's not included. It is required to be included. The case is Littman v. City of Oakland. I cited in my papers. It's 19 Cal App 5th, 750 is the citation. The whole of the building code is incorporated against the city, where the city is required to follow the whole of the Title 24 of the California regulations. And that requires that there be an appeal process for decisions by the building inspector. In order to have a suspension by the building inspector that met the constitutional requirements and the building code requirements, Mr. Friedman would have to receive notice of a hearing from Mr. Lockaby. Mr. Lockaby would have to hear that evidence. And then I would have better information for you about the various, the decision that Mr. Lockaby made. We would also know what the decision was that was being appealed specifically and under what code that authority was happening. Then it would all come to you, and you would be able to determine whether or not you would want to uphold Mr. Lockaby's decision. As it is, there is no underlying hearing by which Mr. Friedman was allowed to provide evidence and thereby attempt to show Mr. Lockaby that these changes are entitled to ministerial review and are not required to go to the Planning Commission. However, because we weren't given that opportunity, here we are. The attempt here is that the town requested Mr. Friedman to institute this appeal, though we do not find authority for it in the code. We then did so. There was also discussion that perhaps I rushed to file, or Mr. Friedman rushed to file the appeal. I want to be very clear. There is a great deal of pressure to complete the work. Unfinished work has a great many issues. And it's to everyone's interest to to move the work forward to completion. Mr. Friedman wants to complete the project, wants to submit all of the changes for the appropriate review. And that is... This is our attempt to see if we might be able to find a way forward so that Mr. Friedman can complete his safe, legal work that's consistent with the building code and the planning code. I should also mention that the town has rejected issuing Mr. Friedman a green tag, which would allow him to, which would allow PG&E to install electricity. However, the town, or Mr. Lockaby, has seen no issue with the electrical system and apparently is withholding the green tag so that to try and create pressure for Mr. Friedman to submit what Mr. Lockaby believes needs to go to the Planning Commission. But I believe he's incorrect. The planning code gives him the authority to approve changes like these and/or to submit their changes to staff to have them approved in a ministerial manner. As a matter of policy, the changes that Mr. Friedman has made are not in violation of the building code or planning code. They are not creating unsafe conditions. This type of barriers to construction limits housing stock in a town like Fairfax. So I am requesting that you accept the appeal because Mr. Friedman is entitled to a hearing prior to his appeal, prior to his permit being suspended or revoked. His, the changes that he made are subject to a ministerial review, which he did submit for. And the... And ultimately, there there needs to be a building inspector appeal process, which is currently not in the code.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Harris. Any questions from my colleagues on the dais upstairs?
Just one question for Ms. Otto. Could you speak to the issue that Mr. Harris has raised regarding a specific hearing process required for suspending the permit? His, he's alleges.
Yeah, the building code does, I was trying to pull it up. The building code does say that if you're going to revoke it, then go to Chapter 17032. In this case, what I've heard from staff is that the permit hasn't been revoked. It's been stopped or suspended because they're constructing, contrary to what the permit, they went beyond what the permit allowed them to do. So we have a little bit of a disconnect there. We're not revoking the permit, is what I've heard from staff and even from the applicant. At one point says revoke, and the other side says the stop-work order. We do have, within the code, within the building code, it refers back to the appeals section in 17036.040, which basically says, when we're talking about the noticing, giving the notice, and then it goes into that section talking about our normal appeal process. Typically, for building code issues, you don't have a committee by numbers. There's a lot of safety issues and otherwise dealing with the building official, which is why he's granted authority to do the stop-work orders. And as you heard, the building official say, he went out and told them to stop, and if they didn't, they could be cited by the police. So the building official is responsible for ensuring the safety of not only the actual building, but also the residents around it, and that's why they're given such authority. There's not the same, like with a revocation of a CUP, where before we do that, the due process has to attach, and we have to have a public hearing. We can't just act. The building official is slightly different than that because of life safety issues. And otherwise, there are granted powers that we just don't normally have. So there's a nuance here because it is a building official. And that is what being granted to you right now is why the council is here tonight, is to allow him an opportunity to appeal this stop-work order and having it within your hands to decide whether or not the building official acted appropriately.
Thank you, Kylie.
If I may, I can also add, and I think Mark can add, some information in response to Mr. Harris's assertions. Would that be okay?
Please.
So first of all, this is not a revocation of a permit. And yes, there would be a notice, 10 day notice. It would be for the planning commission. As a matter of fact, if we move to revoke the permit, the permits that he received from the planning commission, that could come up on appeal to the council, but this is not a revocation. This is a suspension of his building permit. And we are unable to find, and in fact, I have not heard from Mr. Harris, any citation to authority that requires a pre-deprivation hearing for a suspension of a building permit. So we are trying to provide an appeal process under chapter 17 to the town council for specifically the narrow issue of the suspension of the building permit. And Mr. Harris is correct when he says there are some issues here, some requests from Mr. Friedman that could be approved ministerially by the building official. Those relate to ADU and JADU, but there are others. There are other things that have already been constructed that are not according to the approved plans, the plans approved by the planning commission. And in order to have those types of changes made, specifically the low roof in front is now a deck across the entire second floor. There's an outside staircase from the JADU that's on the the second floor now. And so those types of things need to go back to the planning commission. And Mr. Friedman has been told repeatedly ever since last fall that he needed to make application back to the planning commission to go back and seek changes to his approved plans, to seek some revisions, approval on these revisions that he's already constructed. We've seen no movement to apply for a review by the planning commission of the changes. And also Mr. Freeman mentioned an SB9 application. I'm not aware of an SB9 application. I think that was something that Mr. Freeman had spoken about. He wanted to do, but I don't think there's actually been an application. I would leave that to Mark. Perhaps Mark has more information about that.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Janet. What application?
An SB9 application.
A what?
SB9.
SB9. It would be through Lyndon Neal at the planning department for a lot split.
No, there, I haven't seen anything. I would add on the jurisdictions can have a hearing board. And that would have to be maintained. You'd have to have a group of citizens from the town that would hear appeals that, you know, for code issues that I bring up that people don't agree with. Towns can have a hearing board. But in 20 years that I've been here, I think there's been maybe six appeals. So maintaining a board of people is not really realistic. So the code allows for smaller jurisdictions to refer appeals to the town council or the to the council. So that's why it's coming to you.
Thank you for that clarity.
I have a question for Mr. Harris, since we're still trying to wrap up Mr. Harris's section, but I appreciate all of the additional supportive answers to Vice Mayor Kohler's question. In order for me to ask my question for you, Mr. Harris, I have a question for Mr. Lockaby. So if you don't mind, I'll just ask him quickly. In the staff report, Mr. Lockaby, you mentioned the over excavation of the basement and the original agreement from the planning commission to do a two-step sort of approach to that. And that being part of the reason for the original stop work order that has kind of spiraled to this point. Could you speak a little bit more about the, the issues with excavation at that site? I'm just trying to get a better sense of what led you to take the step to suspend.
The, the excavation was a total excavation to the full level. And it didn't, the excavation didn't have the steps. And when I talked to Mr. Friedman about it, he said he was going to just build one level. And I said, well, you, you can't do that. You, you have to have a stepped foundation. And the argument ended up with the stop work order, basically. And then he agreed to do the step foundation, which he did. He did do a stepped foundation.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Mr. Harris, in this whole process, just trying to clarify, like for your client, the appellant, there was no like willful misrepresentation in the application for the original permit. It, it was just, your, your telling of it and, and the appellant's telling of it. There was always a desire to do what was in the permit, but things changed on the ground and it turned from being this sort of smaller situation to to being a larger excavation or as written in the staff report, an over excavation of the basement. But not, not intentionally misrepresented in the original permit. Is that correct?
So yeah, let me speak to that more generally, but in the permit suspension that Mr. Lockaby issued, there is no mention, and this, we should be clear on this, there is no mention of a, of any unsafe issue related to the foundation or the basement. I understand that perhaps the town might decide to allow some other construction because the construction was stopped in the middle. But to be clear, there are three, I described it in the verified petition, there are three specific items that are described as the reasons for the suspension. There is the none of them are the size or scope of the foundation or of the basement area. So to, to that's my first point. To the second point, there are no misrepresentations that Mr. Freeman made during the construction. The building code contemplates that changes happen during construction. People start building things and then make changes. It happens all the time. And we describe that section of the building code, which is when you make changes during construction. You then, if you make changes during construction, which are not compliant with, which are not consistent with the plans, then you submit new plans to the building official for approval. And that's what Mr. Freeman is doing here. He has submitted plans to Mr. Lockaby for approval. He also will be submitting plans to Mr. Lockaby for approval. And just also, there's some talk about suspension and revocation. I, I understand your attorney might also have something to say about it, but in the case of City of San Marino, the, the, the city in that case said that the license or the permit would, and this is a quote, stand revoked in a suspense file, right? And it was that it would, the permit would no longer be effective until the the person who had the building permit would complete various tasks, right? That was the, the concept. This is exactly the same here. I do believe that Mr. Freeman is entitled to a hearing, a noticed hearing prior to depriving him of the ability to construct his project.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other questions from colleagues or we can go to public comment? Yes, Councilmember Ackerman.
I guess this is a question for Mr. Lockaby or Ms. Otto. The, what, what is the difference between a stop work order and a suspension of a permit? I would refer that to the attorneys.
Okay, that's fine. I can, I mean. Yeah, and I'll take that unless you correct me if, as the staff attorney wants to say something different, but the stop record order basically puts a halt on it because at this point in time, my understanding based off testimony you've received is that the building permits were issued in conformance with city planning commission approval. At this point in time, the building is being constructed differently than what planning commission approved. And it's basically said, hold on, stop. This is not being done properly. At this point in time, typically what would happen is the applicant would go back and either go to planning staff and say, do I need to go back to planning commission or not? But at this, that's not where we are at this moment. We just have basically put a pause on the construction because things are going outside of what the permits allow in their present state. And I'll let staff attorney now, if she has some clarification based off the facts that I might not be aware of, but I'm just basing it off what I've heard.
The way that we use stop work order is, is stopping what immediate work is happening. And we've done that now twice with this project. Once last year and once this year. And a suspension is, is the next, is considered to be the next step. It's a suspension of the permit entirely. So no approvals, nothing can happen on that permit until the issues are resolved. And the issue is that the construction has already occurred that is not in conformance with the approvals. And while some of those, some of the construction things, the changes that have occurred are ministerially approved by the building official, namely things connected with ADUs and JADUs, and that's because of the new state law. There are other changes and we speak to the roof that's now a deck across the top. And, and other things, the outside staircase, et cetera. Those things are needing approval revision to the approved plans by the planning commission. And that has been conveyed to Mr. Freeman consistently since last year, since the first stop work order. And there has been no application made to the planning commission to change the approved plans to now reflect what has already been constructed. So a suspension of the permit is the next step. It's not just to stop the immediate work you're doing right here and now. It's stop the whole project until we can get this worked out. And so we don't expect to see construction on this project. Even the things that are in conformance with the plants because the permit itself, the building permit itself has been suspended. It has not been revoked and a revocation is possible, but that would be a noticed hearing before the planning permission. And that's not the step that the building official would take. The building official suspends, but there could be a request that the planning commission consider a revocation of the permit in its entirety. Should the permit be revoked? Then he will have to reapply. And, and that is not a step that we have contemplated taking quite yet. We are simply at the permanent suspension stage.
I ask a follow-up question to Councilmember Ackerman's. Are you complete with yours? Okay, so I think that's helpful information. So is it, so I'm understanding it correctly that there had been multiple stop work orders and correspondence essentially like emails or letters that, that acted in effect as like cure letters saying, you, you need to do this before we can you know, move forward with the permit as granted. But, but those material and substantive changes to the permit remained. And so this is just an elevation of the, the process or that next step in the process. That's what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, that's helpful. Yeah, let's go to a public comment at this time. Every member of the public gets two minutes to comment on this item if you so wish. And feel, yes, please feel free to just step up to the podium and make sure you press the button to turn the mic on and just speak clearly into the mic. Thank you for being here.
Hello. My name is Renou Malhotra. I'm at 85 Wood Lane, so I am right next door and the current situation with the excavation affects me immediately. And there's no way for him to build, for Kobe to build our adjoining fence retaining wall without it impacting me. So and I was away when the excavation happened and when I returned, the pathway at the back that goes between the cottage and the fence, one third of it had fallen in already was, was, and if, as I walked on it, it was caving. So that part he did shore up, but had I not objected, then that would have been left as it was. So the very back hillside from the beginning, my two concerns about this project have been the micro space so in very extreme events, weather, winter event has standing water. So from the beginning, my concern was that a big basement right next door to me was going to affect that standing water and make it worse. So it went from a small basement to a huge basement. That's not why we're here today. My biggest concern right now where we are is if Kobe has permission to support that back hillside where he has cut into and has not yet. But when he does, the rain is coming. I mean, we're two weeks away from October, so that is my big concern. And then should he shore it up? That doesn't really get it ready for winter and that's the part I don't understand is, you know, he, he has to build a retaining wall at the back. He has to put drainage in before he can pour concrete needs approval. So there's a timeline here and I think time is of the essence. That's my biggest concern, but I just wanted to, since the basement has come up, you know, when he started excavation, I think it's three times. I don't know what the ratio area is. That, that was not a small change. Okay. All right.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Lockaby.
I just wanted to respond to the shoring. The shoring that he would do would be the final retaining wall. So when he, when we give him permission and have asked him to shore up the adjacent property and his property, it would be the final retaining wall that would be the shoring.
Thank you. Any other public speakers on this item?
Hi, I'm Erica Milligan. I'm also on Wood Lane and I just, one, I want to support Mark. I want to let you know that the neighbors in the area are watching this project and we're concerned about the safety of the, the properties next to this one. And while I can't speak to willful misrepresentation in the application of the permit, I can say that this has been misrepresented to the neighbors. You know, it was initially represented as a single family home, someone who wanted to be in the community, someone. And it's now a three unit building, which I support. I support more housing in Fairfax. But that's not what was initially presented and it's been consistent in that way that he says one thing and he ends up doing another. It seems like, it seems like a ask forgiveness approach, like dig as big a hole as you can because you can't fill it back in. And, and then you start building the house and you don't follow the stop work orders and you just keep going. I, it feels like this is being rammed through without awareness of the safety of the properties around it and the impact to the community.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
There you go. I'm Suzanne Quentin and I'm a homeowner also on Wood Lane. And you know, I'm one of the people that drives by this construction project every day. I live down near the stables. So at the other end of the street and you know, I, I bought my home in 2011 and we have cultivated on our street very deliberately a sense of community as, you know, makes people attracted to the town of Fairfax in the first place and that we know you all as a town council help uphold the values of. And I, that's really what I want to speak to is that I feel like this project is almost happening unaware of the fact that every other person on this street is on a chat thread talking about it. And the disruption to it and the lack of attention to the impact and the noise on a Sunday and the construction going on as one of our elderly home members is dying right across the street and yet again and again and again, blatantly disregarding the permits that you've put in place for this project. And so to me, it's just been such a huge disregard of community. And we have attended to community very deliberately on Wood Lane and I just wanted to be the voice to that, that this, you know, I, I, I support and appreciate all that you're doing to negate someone just acting however they want. When, and I know my time is up, so I'll stop, but when that excavation happened and then all the rains happened, it was like a swimming pool on that property and it's continued to just be an overwhelming project to the whole street. It's, it, it, its footprint is much bigger than it should have been granted.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Anyone on Zoom, Christine?
We have one speaker. Oh, nevermind.
None?
No one.
Okay, then we will close public comment on this item and take it back to the dais.
I'm sorry, nope.
Okay. An indecisive Zoom member.
I have, oh, yeah. I have one person.
Okay.
We have Maya Friedman.
Okay.
Maya, you're unmuted.
Hi, thank you. Sorry, technical difficulties on my end over here, hands going up and down. I just wanted to voice my support for increased housing availability and ADUs and JDUs. And I understand that this is a very tight-knit community on Wood Lane and that they might have strong feelings about, I'm sorry, hang on one, strong feelings about a new home being built in the neighborhood after a very, you know, tight community has been formed and a new home hasn't been built probably in quite some time there. So it can be hard and it can be hard to have a new home built. But I don't believe that the building envelope has changed significantly or at all, that the footprint is the same and that the changes that have been made have been to the interior of the house. And that changes are going to continue to happen when a home is being built. And so that those changes should all be accounted for at the end with final approval. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Maya. If that was the only comment on Zoom, then we will now officially close public comment and take it back to the dais here. Vice Mayor.
Another one.
We officially closed public comment. I'm sorry. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, well, thank you, everyone, for appearing here tonight. Having read through the materials and all materials, including what was submitted very late, I'm and having sat on the planning commission before I was on the council, I know that the planning commission spends a lot of time really trying to deliberate and make sure that they're doing things safely, making sure that there wouldn't be any landslides, trying to work with the applicant on what makes sense for the project as well as considering some of the neighbors' concerns to the extent feasible. What I've seen in this is a continual sort of, you know, I I know Mr. Lockaby and I know he has a reputation as being the best building official in the county and trying to work with people. I mean, it's true. I've heard that from people all over the county is that trying to work with people on solutions, even when things, you know, really are changed. This is not, there are not ministerial approvals required here. It does need to go back to the planning commission. Before I make the motion, I would like to say that I have significant concerns over what has been brought up on the excavation for the garage and that Mr. Friedman has not agreed to shore that up so that we ensure that we're not having impacts on adjacent landowners. And my my suggestion is, apart from the motion I want to make, is that I don't think we necessarily have a willing applicant to move forward. And as one of the public commenters expressed, the rains are coming. And so I would like us to consider, to the extent that we can, using our town resources to shore that up to make it stable and then seek reimbursement at a later date. But I would like to make the motion that we the appeal be denied and that the suspension be upheld pending review and action by the planning commission. And I would urge Mr. Friedman and his attorney to put together those materials and go through the planning commission. And to the extent feasible, the town and the planning commission will try to do the best they can to work with some of these changes. These are not insignificant changes. Having sat on the planning commission for quite a while, as did my colleague, Councilmember Ackerman, these are significant changes. These are not a little tweak here and there. So that's my motion.
Is there a seconder for the motion?
I'll second.
Yeah, I can. Thank you for that motion. And I just wanted to comment that the authorities of, and I also want to extend my thanks to Mark. He is an excellent building official, and I've worked with him on projects as well. And I've certainly found him to be accommodating to every extent possible. But his, his his goal and his authority are around public safety. The planning commission is different. The planning commission actually at this time serves also as a design review board. So the planning commission's scope is much broader. And there's not, and that's why we have the appeal process. We've actually heard appeals from planning commission decisions that that have been appealed to council because the planning commission is looking at a broad scope of issues and and serving in in a capacity to possibly extend variances or whatever might might, they might find appropriate, given the findings. But that's a very different situation from the building official who sees an unsafe condition that's going on right now in in reality and needs to protect the public safety. So I think we've followed the appropriate procedure here. And I I support this motion as well. I think.
Do we need to put a cap on the expense?
I I don't think so. I think our building official will do the best he can.
I'd I'd like it to be a cap of $50,000 or something. I don't.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, this is Kylie.
Please, Kylie.
Sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
They wanted me to start my video. I got distracted by too many things. If you're talking about the portion of the motion, or at least the comment that talked about city resources being spent, that item is not on the agenda tonight, and it could be put on a future agenda.
Oh, fair enough.
Stop the discussion.
That makes sense. Yep.
Yeah, this is just to deny the appeal and uphold the suspension pending review by the planning commission. I believe that was the motion.
That's correct, and I withdraw. But I would like us to discuss it if need be soon.
Be put on a future agenda. I don't mean to stop the discussion. It just is brown act at all.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'll second.
Okay.
Perfect. Okay. Any other furthered comments from council members before we call over the roll?
Yeah, just a really short one. I appreciate the one speaker who expressed a desire to support the creation ADUs and JDUs. And I think we all do. And, you know, I like that he's, you know, trying to provide that housing to the town. But I really think that, you know, it needs to be done in a way that's safe, legal, and respectful to the neighbors. And that doesn't seem to be the case here. So it's not that anyone here is against ADUs or JDUs. Love them, but it has to be done the right way. So thank you.
Well said. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Blash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kohler.
Yes.
Mayor Catrano.
Yes.
All ayes.
Okay, that motion passes. And we are now finished with our business, and I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much.